This is the May 13th Special Meeting of the Montgomery Independent School District Board of Trustees. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Honored to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Ms. Alcantara, are there any public comments? There are no registered public comments. The board will go into closed session as authorized from the Texas Open Meetings Act for the reasons listed on the agenda. We will return shortly. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we are returning from the... Thank you, Ms. Alcantara. Appreciate it. We are returning from closed session. Board members, are there any action items from closed session?
I make a motion to suspend hiring authority delegated in DC local.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Ivy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Are there other action items?
And I'll second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. And I believe maybe one more action item.
I'll make that motion to consider in possible action to reinstate hiring authority delegated in DC local.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen, and second by Mr. Rob. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstained. Alright, that motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that is the conclusion of the special meeting. Give us one second to address technology issues. This is the May 13th Regular Meeting of the Montgomery Independent School District Board of Trustees. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, as we enter this time of transition, our students looking to new chapters of their life, and our new board member joining us, please continue to bless and protect our students, our teachers, our administration. Bless this board, continue to guide them. Heavenly Father, I ask that you watch over our town and our greatest asset, our greatest, most cherished asset, our children. In your son's heavenly name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Honored to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, thank y'all for joining us tonight. Dr. Ruffin, do we have any special recognitions or presentations?
I just told y'all to speak into it. Mine's not even on. We have a whole lot of special recognitions, as you can tell by a very crowded room. Excited to have y'all here this evening. Mr. Marino, you want to come forward and kick us off?
Good evening, Dr. Ruffin and board. It's truly one of the most exciting times in the school district because you go on our social media, and every day, there's a student breaking some record, national, state, going, winning the state championship. And this room tonight is full of students that have excelled in the pool, on the golf course, or on the boat. So I'd like to call up Coach Laplante to introduce some amazing coaches and students tonight.
Thank you, board. Superintendent Ruffin, my honor and privilege to be here tonight to introduce all these fine young men and ladies, their coaches, their sponsors, and their families. We know all the accolades and accomplishments that happened through academic awards, all district, participating in state, winning state doesn't happen with all those three awesome groups of people. So the first leader that will be coming up has 10 years of coaching experience, has had the privilege to send 23 kids to state, and not only did he coach one team this year, he coached two. So we're talking about Lake Creek swim and dive, and Coach Wade Thompson, if you guys want to come up.
Alright, I'd like to thank y'all for your time. Thank the board, thank all the parents, and y'all go stand where people can see you. Y'all are the team, I'm just the coach. Alright, so we had, I had the privilege of coaching both teams, and both teams did well. Lake Creek at district just kind of mopped up. We had most of our team go to regionals. These are the gentlemen that progressed from regionals to state, and I'd like to tell you a little bit about each one of them. Let's see. TJ, Thomas Joe Gray, he is our, by far, our most decorated swimmer at Lake Creek. His four years at Lake Creek have been phenomenal. He's going to definitely be missed. Matthew Hoffman, had the pleasure of, Matthew being our boys' captain this year, his quiet mannerisms, he always pushed to be better, always. Even if he PR'd, he wasn't satisfied with it. So, and Robert Hoffman, his brother, what can I say about Robert? He was always by my side, always willing to do whatever I asked. Wonderful, wonderful, gonna go on to do great things. Carter Harmon, what can I say about Carter? He is not only a state qualifying wonderful swimmer, but he's also a football player, and how he maintains excellent grades and does both of those is remarkable. Alex Biddlecombe, he was our boys' MVP this year, just outstanding young man. Swims a butterfly better than I've ever seen anybody. And Neil Skippers was our Heart of a Lion winner, which the, that means he has the strength and the leadership, and the beautiful thing is that Neil is the future of the program. So, alright, let's talk about their accolades. Alright, so I'd like to start by saying Alex, Carter, Matthew, and Neil swam our four-by-two-hundred relay at state. Alex, Carter, Matthew, and Robert swam our four-by-four-hundred relay. Interesting story about TJ. TJ qualified for state in the 200 relay, the 400 relay, the 50, and the 100 free, and then got terribly ill and couldn't swim at state. So Robert and Neil stepped up in his place and did a fantastic job. Alex qualified, he qualified in the 50 free and the 100 fly, and made it to the state finals in the 50 free. And we have two young ladies that were unable to join us, I'll go ahead and mention them. Lauren Ronzman qualified for state in the 200 and 500 and made the finals in the 500, and Grace Waldschmidt made it to the finals in one-meter diving. And that kind of sums up our state qualifying team right here, our boys qualifying team, and we're missing our girls, but that's okay. Thank you.
Okay, second group up. Love watching this team. If, you know, athletic directors never have favorites, but if they did, this one would be close to the top. But I love watching their leader on the sideline, absolutely calm, even though I know he's nervous, kind of remind me a little bit myself duck on a pond there. But absolutely, one or two kicks, maybe a minute or two, maybe a call, I won't talk anymore about that, from winning a state title. But let's bring on up our Lake Creek High School Boys Soccer and Coach George Horan.
Ms. Wells, can you see if they'll stick around and take a picture? I know some of them might have to get going, but we'd love to, after everyone's recognized, take a picture with each group.
Howdy, board. I want to thank you again for having us here, celebrating with us our historical run that we made this year. I just want to talk about these boys real quick. When people ask about success, and they ask about the season, and they want to ask, what did you do different about this year? And it wasn't that we did anything different this year. This, this season happened, started five years ago. When I was named the new boys' soccer coach there at Lake Creek, transitioning from the girls, I went down to the middle school to see what my future looked like, and there was a group of boys down there that just kind of blew me away. And I knew they were going to be a special group once they stepped foot on the high school. Ever since they've been on this high school, they've been a perennial playoff team. Before them, their, Lake Creek has never been in the playoffs at the boys' soccer side. So since they've stepped foot on campus, we've made the playoffs four years. This was the first year that we made a, we won our playoff, our first playoff game. So this season, the success of this season really not only started five years ago, but last year, after our heartbreaker loss in the first round, these boys grouped together, melded together, came together with one idea, that they were going to make it to state. Like I said, we never won a playoff game, but they had it in their mind, they were going to state. And they, I let them talk about it. I let them dream, and I let them talk about it, but I thought deep down, this was never going to happen. But the closer we got to the year, and the work I saw them put in, in the offseason, in the summer, in the fall, there was never a moment that there wasn't at least one or two, three of these boys kicking around a ball on the field without supervision. They were just taking it upon themselves to either go to the neighborhood field, or like I said, meet up at the high school, put in work. When they left school early, some of these seniors, they would stay after school and just put in work. And so as we got closer to the season, I thought this, this was really, this could actually happen. So when we got into our season, we, we scheduled a pretty tough pre-district season with some perennial 6A state representatives, and Seven Lakes, and Cinco Ranch, and Langham Creek, and we were battle-tested. And, but I knew it was gonna, they were gonna pay for it when district started. And so when district started, we took our one lump, we took our one lump, we came together, and we decided we never wanted to feel that way again. And then we went on a 17-game unbeaten streak, and made it all the way to the state semis. As Coach Laplante said, it was one of the craziest games I was ever part of. We went to overtime, so we went to, we played our 80 minutes, we went to overtime, and then went to 14 rounds of PKs. And, so the way... So in true fashion of a goalkeeper, wearing the different colored jersey tonight, he really put us on his back, and he made five saves in that 14 rounds. And if you know anything about PKs, it's not, it's not the goalkeeper, it's about the kicker. But this guy, he went out there, and he made five saves, and all I could do was sit there and laugh. And I was like, I don't, I didn't understand what I was watching, or what we were doing out here. But this guy, he put us on his back because he didn't want it to be because of him that we didn't advance. So Matt Jacobic, our goalkeeper, he was named All-Tournament Team, All-State, All-Tournament Team for, for that performance in the state semis. But these other boys that we have up here, we have First Team All-District players, we have First Team All-State players, we have All-Region players, we have, we have guys that are breaking records and setting records every single year. So this was a special group, and they're going to be missed. But the group that's coming up after them has now seen, seen the light, and seen that it's possible, and it's all because of this group right here. So thank you again for having us here to celebrate them.
Hey, Coach, one, oh, he's taking a picture. Where's the goalie's parents? Is that you? Bless your heart. Oh my. So, I was at, I went to the Kingwood Park game to go to state, which also ended in shootout, or penalty kicks, I'm not a soccer guy, also ended in PKs. And then we traveled to Georgetown and watched y'all play in the semis, and that thing goes 14 rounds. And as a former baseball guy and a pitcher, like, I loved being the guy on the mound with the ball in my hand, but there's no way I would ever want to be standing between those two poles, trying to get my, my team to state. And that young man showed up and showed out, and I, all I could think about was how nervous your parents have to be in these moments. And I want to say that because of y'all, I took my two kids to that game, my two of my oldest to that game, and before they fell asleep on the way home, all they could talk about was like, I think I should play soccer. You know, I think I want to play soccer, this is fun. So congratulations to y'all, I thoroughly loved watching y'all compete. Young man, hats off to you, phenomenal job.
Okay, the next awesome group, led by two great leaders, one's a Miss Do-It-All, the other one's probably working on a sponsorship for my new boat, I'm sure. But they're two of the best organizers around. You know, fishing tournaments are not easy to organize. It's not an eight-team volleyball or basketball bracket. So these two are definitely commended for the work that they do. So let's go ahead and bring up Tony Lutke, Mark Hooker, and our fishing team.
Good evening. We are honored to be here. Thank you for your time. Thank everybody here for your time. Dr. Ruffin, I think your, your children are also fishermen as well. So, okay. So anyway, when I call, call your name, I want you to raise your hand so that people will know who you are. Chase Benton, Trevor Mahoney, Morgan Scott, Jace Earhart, Brenner Kirkland, Jacob Riley, Colton Hatsold, Josiah Dancer, Hunter Laskowski, did I do it right? Alright, okay. Talon Techmire, Waylon Hasara, and then lastly, Jackson Petty. Okay, so these guys are going to be representing, the bulk of them are going to be representing our team at the state champ, the Texas High School Bass Association State Championship. That event will be on Lake Conroe, May 31st and June 1st. Thanks to Athletic Director Laplante, and Dr. Ruffin, we're going to get to, utilize the stadium for our weigh-in. So we're inviting everybody in here to please come out and cheer these guys on, because we're, we're in hopes that we're going to bring another state title. So, speaking of that, I want to talk about two young men that won, and for all of us that are old enough, we remember that there was an AP and UPI poll. So there are different organizations, and so within the state, this one's actually a national organization. And so Jacob Riley and Brenner Kirkland. You guys, yeah. Okay, you see those trophies they have? These guys are the state champions in, for the state of Texas, in the TBF. They have earned, they have earned a position to go to the national championship in Oklahoma in June. They're going to be joined by Colton Hatsold and Jett Moore. Unfortunately, Jett couldn't be here tonight, he had to work. But Colton, can you please raise your hand? Okay, Colton, you know, a senior leader, he has been a great, you know, ambassador for our program. And he'll be up there as well because he and, Jett barely missed out on beating those guys, and so they were the second-place team, and so they advanced as well to the national championship. And, and speaking of that, and if you guys remember, in 2022, we had a team from Montgomery go to Alabama, and, and they won the national championship. And so we're, we're in hopes that these, these young men will do the same. Like I said, we're gonna have the Texas High School version here, and we, we would hope, hope you guys would come out and cheer these guys on. It's going to be a great event. We've been lobbying for 11, 12 years to try to get Texas High School Bass Association to come here for the state title, and we finally got them to acquiesce. They probably got tired of hearing my phone call. And so, but, and I, I want to say here tonight that the same thing I say everywhere I go. There would not be a team without this young lady right here. Okay, she is the hardest worker I've ever seen. And so she keeps us on the straight and narrow. I'm just the guide on the side, you know, the crazy dude out front, but this is it right here. So we would not have a team if it not for Mrs. Tony Lutke. But we thank you for your time. We have, we have a few things. Waylon, make sure that each person up here gets our MISD Fishing Team mug.
One more round of applause, ladies and gentlemen.
And next, to thank Dr. Ruffin for the foresight and, and the leadership to, even though I retired in December, it was the toughest decision of my life, but he, he had the foresight to say, you know, we can find a way to keep you here and keep you going, and, and, and all of us really want to thank you. So Colton, my leader, is going to bring you something special.
Okay, last but not least, this group led by a coach that's had seven years coaching, four of them being a head coach, that has sent 13 golfers. That's a lot for golf. You don't have a lot of golfers out there. It's isn't football or volleyball, but 13 golfers in the last three recruiting classes have gone to play on to the next level at, at college. So that's big for, for Montgomery ISD. He also, he and his beautiful wife welcomed a brand-new baby during the season, this spring. So let's welcome up Coach Sam Hochhauser and our state champion, Lake Creek High School golfer, Addie Cerber.
Good evening. Thank y'all so much for having us out. Congrats to all the teams. This is really incredible honor, and a kind of a testament to the success that Montgomery ISD continues to have in all the extracurriculars. I have the pleasure of introducing our 2025 state champion golfer, Addie Cerber. I get to talk to her, talk about her a little bit. When she came to us four years ago as a freshman, she told me right away, one of the first words out of her mouth, she goes, "Coach, I'm going to win state. I'm going to win state." I said, "Okay, well, it's a little bit, a little bit more difficult than that," but she, she was like, she was gonna do it, which was awesome. Love that kind of go-getter attitude about that. And so we, we worked hard for, for several years, and ultimately got to that goal. She is our two-time team captain, both as a junior and as a senior. She's number 22 in her class that graduates here in, I guess, just a week. And so really incredible, kind of a testament to the true student-athlete montage that we have here, that we try to produce here in Montgomery. And before she stepped on campus, we were, you know, she's been here for four years, Lake Creek's only been, this is the completion of, I guess, of our seventh year. We never even made it past the district, like, as a team, with a player, nothing, right? And some of the things that she was able to help the team accomplish throughout the year, or throughout the four years that she was here, we made it to regionals all four years, we made it to state all four years. She was part of three team district champion, championships. She was three-time individual district champion. We were qualified, like I said, qualified for regionals all four years, two team regional champions, and two-time as an individual as well, as a regional champion. Qualified for state, got there all four years, highest finish, also part of her tenure here, was a third-place finish back in 2023. Individually speaking, she was able to finish in the top 10 individually at state all four years, which I know that's, that's, yeah, worth a round of applause. It's, only 72 golfers get to make it to the state championship every year in each classification. She was the one that made it all four years, and then finishing in the top 10, and not only finishing in the top 10 each year, but each year progressing and getting a little bit closer to that number one. I think she finished ninth your freshman year, tied for fifth, then fifth individually, and then now she was the, the state champion. It was pretty incredible to watch that day, just about two weeks ago. Tough conditions out there up in Georgetown, we played in a lot of wind. First round, she shoots 72, she's tied for the lead. It was a very difficult round, I guess you would say. You said it was a grind as she came off the golf course, but she was in good position. And like I said, she'd been putting her, so much pressure on herself for four years to make this happen, but something just clicked that next day. That first day, we went out early, she birdied her first hole, and then kind of never looked back. She had nine birdies in her final round out of 18 holes, so she birdied half the holes out there. We had one little hiccup in the middle of the round. She was cruising, we were headed to just a smooth sailing finish. One little hiccup that brought us kind of back to planet Earth a little bit, but she rebounded nicely, birdied her final three holes, got into a playoff, and then went and eagled the playoff hole to win, which is just really incredible. And so just kind of, it brought me back to that first interaction I had with Addie, wanting to win state. It really was kind of a full-circle moment. And to do it in, if y'all know Addie, in true Addie fashion, was one way. There's no shortage of drama in that sense. But no, she just likes to keep things exciting for us. But really excited for her. She's going to graduate here in a couple, in a week as the most decorated golfer in probably, in Lake Creek history. She's our first individual state champion, and she's off to Mizzou next year to play golf collegiately and to get a degree in business.
Finance.
Finance, more specifically. And we'll miss her correcting me all the time like that. But no, we're, all jokes aside, really proud of her and everything that she was able to accomplish in her four years here at, at Lake Creek. Thank y'all so much. Thank y'all so much.
No wait, there's more.
No wait, there's more. And by the way, there's a whole lot of things that fall apart around this place without Toni Lukey, so she does a whole lot more than just that fishing team. She's such a blessing to our campuses. All right, moving on, I've got the privilege to make an introduction. So, our teaching and learning team is small but mighty. They've made incredible strides, honestly, without kind of the help and support and guidance and leadership of someone directly to oversee that department and lead that department. So, I'm excited to welcome up Ms. Kristen Meeks, who we hired at our last workshop as our new executive director of teaching and learning. Come on down, Ms. Meeks. So, Ms. Meeks is coming to us from Region 6 Education Service Center. She's a school support specialist there, now a school success specialist there now. Through her career, she's done it all, practitioner from everything, from K-1, mathematics, K-38 science, high school social studies, really bringing a vast knowledge and comprehensions of research-based instructional strategies, writing and implementing high-quality curriculum, utilizing data to drive student achievement and inform our instructional practices, and implementing systems of support that are really focused on supporting our teachers as they work to provide high-quality instruction to all students. One thing that really stood out to me through the interview process, and I think everyone that sat on one of the committees would agree, is the incredible passion and energy that she brings to all things teaching and learning. And talking with some of the folks that she's worked with in the past, they echoed that, and they really echoed her ability to connect the why in what we do when it comes to looking at ourselves in the mirror as instructional specialists, as instructional leaders, and always looking to improve ourselves so we can then and forth improve our kiddos. So, Ms. Meeks, welcome. Feel free to say a few things.
Thank you very much. You know, Dr. Ruffin, you know, President Fuller, trustees, Montgomery community, it is just truly an honor to be able to serve in a district like Montgomery ISD. I was very blessed. People believed in me. People saw a passion, people saw a way, people opened doors, and that's what I want to bring into Montgomery ISD. I want to bring in those celebration pathways for all our kids, all our educators, give everybody an opportunity to grow. So, just thank you very much for truly making a dream come true. So, thank you.
All right, last but not least, before we proceed with the other part of the agenda, which includes a swearing-in of a new board member who I see sitting out there in the audience, we want to take a moment to honor and recognize Dr. Matt Fuller for his six years of dedicated service to Montgomery ISD as a member of this board. Folks serving on his school board requires an immense investment of time, energy, and dedication, and heart. It's a responsibility that often comes without praise or accolades, but does carry a profound impact on our students and our staff and the future of a community. And I will say, Dr. Fuller has exemplified what it means to lead with purpose and passion. So, I would like to say, Dr. Fuller, thank you for the role you played in giving me the opportunity to lead this outstanding district and for welcoming my family to this community. I will say without fail, every time that we were at a Friday night football game together, I'd be standing on the track with my kids, and I'd look up, and here comes Dr. Fuller with two bags or three bags of M&Ms and just sneakily handing those to my kids.
I sugared him up for you.
Sugared him up and handing them back. So, thank you for intentionally making Montgomery feel like home for myself and my family. Serving on a board is a personal commitment that a lot of times these folks sign up for, but often it impacts the trustee's family and their loved ones as much as it impacts them and their time. So, I want to extend a special thank to Ms. Fuller and your boys, Tyler and Jordan. And there's many things that you have missed over the last six years that you would have loved to see and you would have been a part of, and so the sacrifice extends way beyond what you have, and it's a burden that they bear also. The last six years in public education, folks, they've been some of the most difficult times in history. If you think about what has transpired in the last six years, during his time on the board, Dr. Fuller's helped guide this district through the challenges like COVID-19 pandemic, been instrumental in passing important bond elections and funding measures that will live on to impact all students in Montgomery ISD. He was instrumental in the development of our pathway to premier strategic plan, ensuring that we had a clear, community-driven vision for the future of MISD. What I think people don't realize about Dr. Fuller is how he actually serves public education landscape as a whole, not just within this district. Many of you don't know his role outside of serving as a board member here, but if you had a student come home and say, "Hey, there was this beekeeper guy that came to school today and taught us about bees and honey," that's because this guy does not turn down an invitation from one of our elementary teachers to come and speak to their kids about bees and honey and the agricultural industry.
Again, with the sugar.
Sugar, it's a constant there. He's also been recognized as an expert in many areas of school safety and security. He's been recruited to participate in statewide task force alongside education and safety experts to develop effective processes and protocols and standards to enhance student safety in the wake of tragedies such as the one in Uvalde. His research at Sam Houston State has resulted in cutting-edge programs and training programs and simulations for school resource officers to go through to more effectively respond to these types of horrific incidences. He's held statewide conferences focused on improving the safety and security of our schools, so thank you for the work and commitment to improving education for students and districts across this state. Lastly, on a personal note, since arriving in Montgomery in January of '24, I can always count on my phone calls and conversations with Dr. Fuller to end with four words: How can I help? That servant-leader mindset made a lasting impact on myself, our board, our district, our entire community. So, Matt, thank you not just for your leadership, but for your friendship. I speak on behalf of the board here in saying, simply put, along with the trustees you've served with in this time, I think a goal of all of us as leaders is make sure we leave it better than we found it, and I think you can absolutely be proud to say you've done that. You've left a legacy here that will benefit this district for years to come. So, folks, please help me recognize Dr. Fuller for his years of service.
Thank you, Mark. If we're gonna be using our made-up names, then doctor it is, okay? Dr. Ruffin. We sound kind of funny here real quick, but, board members, if y'all will indulge me for just a few minutes, as a professor, lecturing is what I do, so sit back and relax. For six years, I've had tremendous honor of serving our community as a school board trustee, three years as president. Today, as I stand before you one last time in this capacity, I'm reminded of the words of another Texan who understood that endings are merely doorways to new beginnings. One of my heroes, Sam Houston, who in 1861, after being removed as governor for refusing to pledge allegiance to the Confederacy, demonstrated remarkable resilience when he said, "The fuss is over and the sun yet shines as ever. What next?" Like Houston, I believe that even when one chapter closes, new opportunities await. I've already begun working on several of those at Sam Houston State, and I recognize that if we have courage and resilience to take those, as every board member up here at one point took that plunge, that leap, then great things happen. So, to our administration, folks, they're here every night, every day, and they're here at every school board meeting. Your unwavering dedication to educational excellence has been the cornerstone of our district's success. To Dr. Ruffin, and I think the count is four other superintendents I've had, three permanent and two interim, to all of them, thank you for all the work that y'all put in, the tireless hours, through challenges and triumphs alike. You've really led with a vision and a steadfast commitment to students and our teachers, so thank you. To our current and our past trustees, though our path at times has been somewhat marked with tension, our shared commitment to our students has been our guidepost, our common ground. I'm grateful to all that you've taught me, and I wish you the best of luck in the road ahead. To our parents, your partnership has been invaluable. You entrust us with your most precious gift, your children, and that sacred responsibility has guided my every decision. To our teachers, you're the heartbeat of our schools and our town. Your passion transformed classrooms into incubators of curiosity and knowledge. The future you shape through your daily work is beyond compare, and it's the greatest chance that any of us have to achieving immortality, to leave a better future in the mind of a child, and you do this every day. To our students, I often say that I was not nearly as well put together as most of our students are at this age. So, you have been my greatest teachers. Your potential, you inspire me, and your future achievements will be Montgomery's proudest legacy. And lastly, to my family, especially my wife and sons, they're not here tonight because they're doing baseball, and I really want to go get to baseball, as you know, so. Your patience, your support, your sacrifices have made my service possible, so there are not words that can express my deep gratitude to my family. The strength of our community lies not in one individual, but in our collective commitment to something greater than ourselves. The fuss of school board service is indeed over for me, and the sun yet does shine as brightly as ever on MISD. So, what's next for our district? Continued excellence. For me, new and broader ways to serve, and for all of us, the ongoing work of preparing our child, our children, for a future limited only by their imagination. Thank you, Montgomery, for the privilege of serving you.
Thanks, President. Appreciate it. We'll be on the job here in a minute.
I think you need me to do election stuff, right? Got it. That works for me.
What? What's happening?
You're gonna do the election stuff if you want me to.
I'll do it as a month.
Got it. Perfect. One second, folks, as we grab our things right quick. We have the good judge here, and that usually means we've got election stuff or we've done something wrong, so.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Yep. All right. All right, we need to move to item four. Ms. Alcantara, do we have any public comments?
Please do.
Okay. All right, we've had three people sign up for public comment. Thank you for registering to speak to the board this evening, so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. We ask that you limit them to three minutes. As you can see, there are a limited number of instances in which the board can respond to you during public comment. We cannot take any votes or actions based upon public comments. Please keep comments respectful and focused on the topic you registered to speak on. The first person is Chris Bauer.
Hello. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight to bring to your attention some serious concerns regarding the leadership and conduct within the Special Education Department here at MISD and to offer a recommendation that I do not make lightly. Over the past few years, my wife and I have experienced ongoing struggles with the ARD team. We have consistently faced miscommunication, unanswered questions, in some cases incorrect or misleading information. The situation became so concerning this year that we felt compelled to hire an attorney to help us navigate through the confusion and protect our son's rights. In response, MISD also retained legal representation, which is required, and Ms. Carrie Clark, the head of Special Education Department, was quick to involve an attorney from San Antonio, Mr. Elvin Houston, and took a, he took a highly antistic stance against us. At the center of this issue was the evaluation of our son, a process Ms. Clark insisted upon despite a written recommendation from our son's physician advising that now was not the appropriate time. Rather than to respect the medical advice, Ms. Clark disregarded the doctor's letter and threatened legal action if we did not comply with her demand for an evaluation. She even went so far to request full access to our son's medical records and communication with our doctors, an invasive and, in our view, unacceptable overreach. Out of fear of being sued and despite MISD's failure to adhere to our son's IEP, we proceeded with an evaluation over Christmas break through Texas Children's. When we presented this evaluation during our next ARD meeting, Ms. Clark and the attorney rejected it, stating it was invalid because it was not conducted by MISD staff. To avoid a lawsuit, we reluctantly agreed to allow the district to conduct its own evaluation. Since then, we have continued to encounter breakdown in communication. We reached out to the diagnostician, Ms. Kimberly Bubella, with questions, but after several weeks of silence, we received a response saying that all communication must now go through the district's attorney. That kind of communication barrier only worsens an already difficult situation. So, I asked the board, how is it possible without open, respectful communication? How can we progress from this? Also, the role of the Special Education Department requires empathy, collaboration, and student-first mindset. Unfortunately, Ms. Clark has demonstrated a pattern of behavior that is oppositional and flexible and lacking the empathy this position demands. I urge you to ask yourselves, how many others have been through what I've already gone through? Also, this has cost not only us, but also MISD, tens of thousands of dollars. I'd like to ask you one more. How much more are you willing to bear as a result of these actions by Mrs. Clark? In the light of all these experiences, I ask you respectfully recommend that Ms. Clark be replaced before the next school year begins. It's time for a change in leadership that puts children's and families first.
Sir, I will have to stop you. Our time is up.
I'm done. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, moving to the next person, we have Morgan Summer.
Good evening, board. My name is Morgan Summer, and I'm the forensic science teacher at Lake Creek High School. I come today to advocate for my fellow teachers. As we round the bend towards the end of another busy school year, teachers begin to explore their next years. Are they staying? Advancements? Are we moving classrooms? New opportunities? My heart hurts to hear some are making decisions based on the lack of support in the classroom. We focus so much on students and their successes that we assume handing teachers a week of teacher appreciation gifts and some extra jean passes solves the problem, but that cannot be further from the truth. Rita Pearson gave an amazing TED Talk on every kid needs a champion. She quotes, "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection, and insists that they become the best that they can possibly be." Teachers need a champion too. Teachers need an advocate, someone that has their back and truly listens to what they have to say. I have been fortunate to find a champion in Dr. Fuller. As I wish him well on his next adventures, I want to- At the center of this issue was the evaluation of our son, a process Ms. Clark insisted upon despite a written recommendation from our son's physician advising that now was not the appropriate time. Rather than to respect the medical advice, Ms. Clark disregarded the doctor's letter and threatened legal action if we did not comply with her demand for an evaluation. She even went so far to request full access to our son's medical records and communication with our doctors, an invasive and, in our view, unacceptable overreach. Out of fear of being sued and despite MISD's failure to adhere to our son's IEP, we proceeded with an evaluation over Christmas break through Texas Children's. When we presented this evaluation to, and during our next R meeting, Ms. Clark and the attorney rejected it, stating it was invalid because it was not conducted by MISD staff. To avoid a lawsuit, we reluctantly agreed to allow the district to conduct its own evaluation. Since then, we have continued to encounter breakdown in communication. We reached out to the diagnostician, Ms. Kimberly Bubella, with questions, but after several weeks of silence, we received a response saying that all communication must now go through the district's attorney. That kind of communication barrier only worsens an already difficult situation. So I asked the board, how to prog, how is it possible without open, respectful communication? How can we progress from this? Also, the role of the Special Education Department requires empathy, collaboration, and student-first mindset. Unfortunately, Ms. Clark has demonstrated a pattern of behavior that is oppositional and flexible and lacking the empathy this position demands. I urge you to ask yourselves, how many others have been through what I've already gone through? Also, this has cost not only us, but also MISD, tens of thousands of dollars. I'd like to ask you one more. How much more are you willing to bear as a result of these actions by Mrs. Clark? In the light of all these experiences, I ask you respectfully recommend that Ms. Clark be replaced before the next school year begins. It's time for a change in leadership that puts children's and families first.
Sir, I will have to stop you.
Thank you.
Our time is up.
I'm done. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, moving to the next person, we have Morgan Summer.
Good evening, Board. My name is Morgan Summer, and I'm the forensic science teacher at Lake Creek High School. I come today to advocate for my fellow teachers. As we round the bend towards the end of another busy school year, teachers begin to explore their next years. Are they staying? Advancements? Are we moving classrooms? New opportunities? My heart hurts to hear some are making decisions based on the lack of support in the classroom. We focus so much on students and their successes that we assume handing teachers a week of teacher appreciation gifts and some extra jean passes solves the problem, but that cannot be further from the truth. Rita Pearson gave an amazing TED Talk on every kid needs a champion. She quotes, "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection, and insists that they become the best that they can possibly be." Teachers need a champion, too. Teachers need an advocate, someone that has their back and truly listens to what they have to say. I have been fortunate to find a champion in Dr. Fuller. As I wish him well on his next adventures, I want to express appreciation for someone who took time out of their day to support a teacher. During my time at Oak Hills, he made it a point to introduce himself the day my team accepted a grant for new microscopes. He requested to see their implementation. The day of, not only did he show up, he also participated, helping with making slides and asking the students questions. Is there anything that I can do? Let me know, is the way he ends all conversations. This year, Dr. Ruffin and Dr. Fuller made an appearance in my classroom while I was showing students a corset that President J.F. Kennedy wore during his assassination. Yes, President Kennedy did wear a corset, and that was due to injuries during his time in the U.S. Navy. Dr. Fuller requested to see my Dexter's lab for a blood spatter, which he showed up a few days later and left with fake blood on his shirt. I hope somebody sends me the dry cleaning bill. Dr. Fuller took it upon himself to support a teacher in the classroom. No cameras, no social media posts, just support. As we usher in new board members, I urge the new and current board members to find time to get to know the teachers at MISD. Find a teacher you do not know personally, and ask them how you can help. Support them in their classrooms. Go beyond the surveys and questionnaires to find the culture. Be their marigold, someone who can encourage and be a comfort and support them, especially for our new teachers. These teachers at MISD are the backbone of our district and part of what makes it so wonderful. My family moved here eight years just for our daughter, or eight years ago, just for our daughter to his hen's school. As we navigate the unknown due to legislation, funding, and the opening of the CTE Center, while families and our students should be the focus, please do not forget about the teachers. Thank you, Dr. Fuller, believing in me, supporting and being my champion these last three years. I will lead by example and continuing your legacy to support educators in and out of the classroom. Enjoy your next adventure. After today, I can finally call you Matt. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amber Oliver.
Pardon me, I'm a little nervous. I'm used to teaching in front of students, not adults, but I am here as a teacher, and obviously, in the news lately, all over social media, there's been talk about teacher pay and all that, but I'm not here for myself as a teacher. I am here on behalf of a different group of educators that we have in our system, our paraprofessionals. Our paraprofessionals are the backbone of some of our classrooms. I have taught in Montgomery ISD for fourteen and a half years in a variety of different capacities and different grade levels, some of my classes requiring paraprofessionals in them. And several years ago, I used to be the able teacher at Lonestor Elementary, which is equivalent to best now, and I could not have done the job I did without the paras I had in my class. Two of the paras I actually had in my class at the time are now certified teachers in Montgomery ISD, and one is working on her teaching degree while still working for Montgomery ISD. Right now, I work at Lake Creek High School, and I am surrounded by a lot of paras that care greatly for our students. What a lot of people don't know, who don't work in special education, is there's a lot of other stuff that goes on that our paras have to deal with, especially for some of our students that have lower needs and that still need things like diaper changing and things like that. That's a lot. And as you go into all of your meetings that you're fixing to have, I know we have not had our salary released and all that, please be thinking about our paras and the pay that our paras receive. Right now, one of our paras, who I'm not gonna name names, but she makes thirteen dollars and twenty-nine cents an hour with three years' experience. And for me, I mean, I wish I made more as a teacher, not gonna lie, but our paras deserve so much more. They do so much more, and yes, a lot of us are not in it for the pay, but at the same time, at the end of the day, we all have families to go home to, we all have families and children to support, and our paras are the backbone of what we do in a lot of our schools and a lot of our classrooms, and without them, we wouldn't be able to be nearly as successful as we are, and they definitely deserve that thought process as you all go into deciding what the pay scale will be next year for all employees of MISD, especially our paras, who really pour their heart and soul into MISD and help us make better, better teachers, better classrooms, better campuses, so please consider them as you go forward.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Ruffin, I ask as usual that you, you and your team will follow up with the individuals that spoke this evening? All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on down our agenda. Next, we move to 5A, Canvas of May 3, 2025, Election. Let me get my papers in order here. All right, this is the election canvas report for the May 3, 2025 Montgomery ISD Board of Trustees election. Position number six, Brian Bear, or Barr. Early voting, two hundred and forty-eight, absentee, twenty-four. Election day, two hundred and seventy. Total, five hundred and forty-two. Position six, Mark Kealan. Early voting, eight hundred and ninety-one. Absentee, twenty-four. Election day, five hundred and sixty-three. Total, one thousand four hundred and seventy-eight. Position number seven, Josh Gerros. Early voting, one hundred and eighty-two. Absentee, eleven. Election day, one hundred and ninety-eight. Total, three hundred and ninety-one. Position number seven, Kyle Calhoun. Early voting, one hundred and seventy. Absentee, seventeen. Election day, one hundred and forty-six. Total, three hundred and thirty-three. Position number seven, Nate Robb. Early voting, eight hundred and eleven. Absentee, nineteen. Election day, five hundred and twenty-six. Total, one thousand three hundred and fifty-six. Is there a motion to certify the results of the May 3, 2025 MISD Board of Trustees election as presented?
I'll make a motion to certify.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. All right, moving to item 5B, Issue Certificates of Election. Right here. All right, thank you, Ms., Dr. Fuller. Sign them. All right, thank you. Moving to 5C, Administer Oath of Office. We've kind of gone slightly out of order, one second. All right, so we're gonna move to Judge Mack.
Judge Mack is here. Very kind of you, thank you. So she, she can come stand right here by you. Perfect. So as it's already been said, and I, I didn't, I didn't realize it takes fifty-five minutes now to get to Montgomery from Willis, but as it's already been said tonight, our greatest asset is our children. And I just want, I want to thank you for saying yes. I know it was a campaign, and those are always fun, I've done a couple of those, but just remember what you've heard today, what you've seen today, and always make, always know that that's the, that's your why, and that's why you ran. So if you'll raise your right hand. It's by the name and authority of the state of Texas, and you're gonna repeat after me. I instate your full name.
I am Mark Kealan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
This is gonna be long. Montgomery Independent School Board, let me start over. Montgomery Independent School District Board of Trustees, position six.
Montgomery ISD.
Independent School District Board of Trustees, position six.
There you go. Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
Defend.
Defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
(applause) Autograph. I just need your autograph right here. Sign right here. I gotta notarize this. All right, very good. All right. You're sworn in, brother.
All right, next we have Mr. Nate Robb.
Now, it already goes without saying, Nate, that you got the coolest dad in the world. I guess you already know that, right?
She's all right. Coming up here.
Come on. Come on up, Dad. Come on, come on up here.
Watch out for the picture.
Yeah. All right. Very good.
All right.
All right, so raise your right hand. It's in the name and authority of the state of Texas that I administer this oath, and if you'll repeat after me. I instate your full name.
I, Nate Robb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Montgomery, Montgomery Independent School District Board of Trustees, position seven.
Montgomery Independent School District Board of Trustees, position seven.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
Defend.
Defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
The laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. All right. And Nate, thank you for, yes, sir, thank you for saying yes for a second go around. Whatever they're paying, whatever, whatever they're paying you is not enough.
All right, we're gonna take a few minutes to take a few pictures with each of them and their families, and then the board as well. All right, Mr. Robb's family.
Guess so.
Good, how are you?
Good.
This is our campaign team.
Teammate. Hey, good, how are you?
Thank you.
I made it just there. Listen up in the parking lot.
Sweet baby.
Thank you.
You can do this.
I'm ready.
Are we gonna be in here?
Mm-hmm.
I got you.
Tell me, tell me.
It was scary there for a few days.
I was so worried.
Almost, here, ten hours, two minutes.
I thought it totally, I'm not gonna be so close.
I didn't know I was going all the way over there.
We just pass it to him. Yeah, he needs this, but I need this, too.
Drop Nate off at the airport.
I can pass it there.
I have to drop it off at the airport.
Just to Texas, so the gallon, right on.
Oh, what? Oh, she's taking.
Is the board being held yourself for the special?
No, I mean, you want me to tell you?
We need to do this.
Oh, let's do that, and then I'll send it.
Okay.
All right. All right. Okay, now that we're back situated again, every single year at this time of year, at the board, the May board meeting, we come back to looking at our ethics that the board members promised to go by, and so we will be each having a part in reading over that. It's a pledge from our board to the district, so if every one of the board members could have yours ready. And as a, as a member of the board, I shall promote the best interests of the district as a whole, and to that end, shall adhere to the following ethical standards.
I will be fair, just, and impartial in all my decisions and actions. I will accord others the respect I wish for myself. I will encourage expressions of different opinions and listen with an open mind to others' ideas.
Trustworthiness and stewardship. I will be accountable to the public by representing district policies, programs, priorities, and progress accurately. I will be responsive to the community by seeking its involvement in district affairs and by communicating its priorities and concerns. I will work to ensure prudent and accountable use of district resources. I will make no personal promise or take private action that may compromise my performance or my responsibilities.
Honoring conduct. I will tell the truth. I will share my views while working conscious, consensus, sorry. I will respect the majority decisions as the decision of the board. I will base my decisions on fact rather than sup, sup, supution?
Supposition.
Supposition, opinion, or public favor.
Integrity of character. I will refuse to surrender judgment to any individual or group at the expense of the district as a whole. I will constantly uphold all applicable laws, rules, policies, and governance procedures. I will not disclose information that is confidential by law or that will needlessly harm the district if disclosed.
Excuse me, commitment to service. I will focus my attention on fulfilling the board's responsibilities of goal-setting, policymaking, and evaluation. I will diligently prepare for and attend board meetings. I will avoid personal involvement in activities the board has delegated to the superintendent. I will seek continuing education that will enhance my ability to fulfill my duties effectively.
Student-centered focus. I will continue, guided by what is best for all students of the district.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, now the board will go into a closed meeting for the reasons listed on our agenda, and we will be back shortly. All right, the board is back in open session. The time is now seven thirty-nine PM. We are moving to item seven, Board Reorganization. For the purpose of electing board officers, I ask that voting be made by a show of hands for clarity. So at this time, I will take nominations for board president. Are there any nominations for this position?
I'd like to nominate Eddie Nguyen.
All right, Mr. Dennison, thank you. I have a nomination for Eddie Nguyen for board president. Mr. Nguyen, do you accept the nomination for the position of board president?
I do.
All right, thank you. Is there any other nominations for board president? All right, hearing no other nominations for board president, I declare...
So, at this time, I will take nominations for board president. Are there any nominations for this position?
I'd like to nominate Eddie Wynn.
All right, Mr. Dennison, thank you. I have a nomination for Eddie Wynn for board president. Mr. Wynn, do you accept the nomination for the position of board president?
I do.
All right, thank you. Is there any other nominations for board president? All right, hearing no other nominations for board president, I declare nominations for board president are closed. We will now vote. May I see a show of hands of those who vote yes for Mr. Eddie Wynn for board president? All right, Mr. Wynn, congratulations. You will be the MISD Board of Trustees President for 2025-2026. We will now switch positions.
All right, y'all might have to bear with me this first night as we get through this, but we'll get through it. Nominations for board vice president are now open. Are there any nominations for this position?
I nominate Ms. Lori Turner.
I have a nomination for Lori Turner for board vice president. Lori Turner, do you accept the nomination for the position of board vice president?
I do.
Are there any other nominations for board vice president? Hearing no other nominations for board vice president, I declare nominations for board vice president are closed, and we will now vote. May I see a show of hands who vote yes for Lori Turner for board vice president? Lori Turner, you are now the board vice president. Nominations for board secretary are now open. Are there any nominations for this position?
I nominate Ms. Lizzie Ivy.
I have a nomination for Lizzie Ivy for board secretary. Lizzie Ivy, do you accept the nomination for the position of board secretary?
I do.
Are there any other nominations for board secretary? Hearing no other nominations for board secretary, I declare nominations for board secretary are closed. May I see a show of hands who vote yes for Lizzie Ivy as board secretary? Congratulations, Lizzie Ivy. You are now the MISD Board of Trustees Secretary for the 2025-2026 year.
We take a moment and they will switch places real quick.
We are now moving to item number eight, the consent agenda. Is anyone interested in pulling the consent, a consent agenda item? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve consent.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Moving now to item number eight, action items. Consider the approval of a resolution by the Board of Trustees of Montgomery Independent School District providing for the defiance and calling for redemption of a certain, certainly outstanding, uh, district obligations. Directing the board secretary or his designee, effectuate the redemption of these obligations, authorizing the execution of an ESCO agreement, or any other items in connection therewith.
Welcome to being president.
Yeah.
There you go. We've got Mr. Lucas Johnna here. He is our district financial advisor and serves in that capacity, so walk us through what we're doing here, what opportunities it has, what benefit it has for the district.
So, using all those fancy words crafted by the attorneys over my left shoulder, is code for paying off some bonds early and saving the district interest that would have been paid if paid over the long term. And so, Ben and I've worked through y'all's finances for this year that y'all are wrapping up, and it looks like about two and a half million is gonna be close to the amount that we can put to use to pay off a portion of y'all's bonds early, gives the opportunity actually to save that interest, and really that's what the action is before y'all. The pros, obviously it saves interest, you know, there's really no cons in this respect because if, otherwise it would go into fund balance. The, you know, the huge advantage schools currently have is that y'all have the ability to have the local control over setting your rate, utilizing funds to pay off bonds early, and we'll see what the legislature does over the next three weeks, but I don't know if Colby, if you want to speak to, like House Bill 19, that one of the bills was intended to restrict school boards from being able to set the rate to pay off bonds early, but I think at this point it might be just a little bit closer to the end of the finish line where it may be dead, but we'll see what happens between now and June 2nd. Anything you want to add?
So, yeah, there's a, one of the bills that was floating through the legislature was House Bill 19. There were four big parts that affected school districts, the first one being that there would only be November-only elections, the second one being that there would be a 20% cap based on your average of your previous three years' property tax collections. So you take your average and then multiply that by 20%, that's what you would have been able to issue after that point, and that's, this is the as filed version of the bill. There was another section that was determining how much you could allocate based on your proceeds, and so making you stick with a certain dollar amount for each project that you offer up. And then finally, the last piece was an idea of minimum debt service payment, and only allowing you to do the minimum unless you had a 60% vote of the board. But, one of the things that I've been telling people always with the legislature is to look at all of the bills collectively rather than one bill, and stick with that, because there's several bills that are floating through the process right now that also affect that, one of which is House Bill 2, and there has been an announcement, there's white smoke, and they do have a deal, so that bill will be heard on Thursday in the Senate Education Committee, and we'll find out more about that. But one of the things that was in the bill coming from the House to the Senate was that you would lose your additional state aid for homestead exemptions based on how much over that minimum debt service payment you're actually paying into, right? And so, thus hindering your ability to defees these bonds early going forward. That's a sort of similar language is also in Senate Bill 4, which is the additional property homestead exemption, and, which is gonna raise the homestead exemption to 140,000, and then also in Senate Bill 23, which is going to be the over 65 and disabled population additional 60,000 for them, that also has mirroring language. Now, the way I read those two bills though, is that only impacts the new homestead exemption, you would only lose that based on how much you're levying, but with House Bill 2's language, it would go back all the way to 2019. So there's the potential that you could lose all of it based on how much you're levying, and it's a proportional situation. We don't have bill language for what they're gonna hear on Thursday. Obviously, there's some highlights floating around right now as we speak, but without the bill language, I can't tell you whether that additional state aid and homestead exemption piece is still in there or not. So, that's where we're at. Regarding House Bill 19, I'll just say, just because that bill is not moving doesn't mean we're not watching to see if that's not gonna be, some of those different aspects are gonna be plugged into different bills. So until we get to June 2nd, we don't know whether those policy ideas are gone or not, so.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the defiance resolution as presented?
I'll make a motion to consider and approve a resolution authorizing the defeasance of outstanding bonds.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Is there, let's see, moving to action item number 9B. Consideration and approval of an order by the Board of Trustees, Montgomery Independent School District, annual ad valorem tax for the payment of bonds, delegating the authority to certain members of the Board of Trustees and district staff to execute certain documents relating to the sale of bonds and authorizing other matters in connection therewith.
So, back in 2015 and 16, there were some different issuance of bonds from that election at that time, and so those bonds are eligible to be refinanced starting this fall, and so it's give us the opportunity over the next 12 months to work with the district, see what the current market is, and at the end of day, if the interest rates make sense to provide for the parameters within the order, essentially save y'all, you know, decent amount of money when it's all said and done, the superintendent and CFO will have the ability to enact that on behalf of the district. And so, opportunity to save, obviously interest on existing bonds that we're not paying off early, and so that's kind of the short of what we're looking to ask y'all for this evening.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the unlimited tax refunding perimeter order 2025 as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the unlimited tax refunding parameter order 2025 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Action item number 9C, consider approval of employee stipend as presented.
All right, so I'm gonna go through this kind of compensation plan update prior to taking action on this, or presenting it as a, for y'all to take action on. So, we know that there's a lot going on with legislation, and we are watching it closely as Colby just referred to. And we've had great conversations, continual conversations with our legislators as these bills have progressed, making sure that they understand how they may impact Montgomery ISD. But I wanted to take a moment to highlight where we are with our compensation plan, and really where we are is a, is a byproduct of Proposition A passing, and you'll see on there are funding priorities from Prop A, which was recruit and retain our staff, safety and security student programs. I've used this model because as we walk through what has taken place, you'll see that we have checked the boxes on these different areas. So in this fiscal year, the things that have taken place for this compensation this fiscal year, we've had the $500 employee retention bonus in December, and we've been able to hire those four elementary teachers in January, five special education paraprofessionals, we've hired a gifted and talented coordinator back, restored campus budget cuts that were made going into the fiscal year, and then addition of a lead detective assignment in the police department. So again, recruit, retain, safety, staff, our safety and security student programs, that touches all three of those areas. It's always important that we take time to put our money where our mouth is, and when I did all of the different community meetings, said this is what we're gonna spend the money on. Myself, this board, I think, is committed to making sure that we highlight that and go back and point to it. Going into next school year, what Prop A has allowed us to secure and approve already is these growth positions and special education positions. We've allocated additional teaching FTEs at the campus level to accommodate for growth. That's something we have not been able to do in the past, so we got in this position this fiscal year where we needed to hire those teachers in the middle of January. We've been able to allocate additional teaching FTEs to accommodate that growth. Enrollment numbers prompted the need for an additional third AP at Oak Hills Junior High School. We've added instructional coaches to support our instruction at our secondary campuses, who had no instructional specialists dedicated to their campus. And then sped positions, we've added 1.7 million dollars in special education positions going into next fiscal year, that's nine paraprofessionals, 11 teaching positions, and then eight different professional staff members, whether it's art facilitators, addition of two behavior interventionists to serve dedicated to Creek Side Elementary and to Montgomery Elementary where our best programs are housed, 504 coordinators, speech pathologists, school psychs, diagnosticians in those areas, and you'll see recruit and retain our staff, checkmarks, student programs, maintaining the level of how we serve our kids is accomplished there. Stipend increases, we've increased police officer certification going into the next compensation plan that has already been approved, and we've increased certain extracurricular stipends that fell below market value to raise them up to competitive amounts. And when I say we have, we have done this, we have raised this, this is what we are building into the compensation plan, obviously that plan has not been approved yet, but we can talk about what we've been able to do through Prop A without being able to say what else we're going to be able to do with additional funding. Pay scale augmentations, we've been working through augmenting our pay scales, and we've allocated, it's over 200,000 dollars to increasing pay grades for certain positions that were considerably below market value. So we, our HR team and Ms. Minor and her team do a phenomenal job of creating these heat maps and comparing us to other districts in the area and statewide that say, where are we in market value for these positions? And so, some of these employee groups, you know, they reside in the transportation department, special education self-contained paraprofessionals, technology department positions, maintenance departments, and other support and auxiliary positions. Next steps, we've talked about this again, where we are with Prop A, House Bill 2, where that looks, and this slide was put up here before Colby texted me a little bit ago, updates on what the Senate substitute is for House Bill 2. But, the way House Bill 2 was sent over to the Senate, it required that 40% of any additional realized revenue be spent directly for teacher compensation increase. Continue to communicate with legislators, compensation plan is obviously depending on the funding available from legislation, I've said this time and again, Prop A will provide the capacity to provide a raise, we just can't say what that is yet for surely, but what we can do is look at our current fiscal year projections and say, we're in a place because of Prop A, just like we did in December, to provide our staff with another $500 employee recognition stipend. And so that's what this action item is, it will be for all full-time staff, and it will go and hit on their May? June? June what? June 5th paycheck. That will be realized on their June 5th paycheck. That's what's in front of you.
I would just like to add, on behalf of the board, when, it's with great pleasure that we bring this to our staff, to just show them our appreciation. We knew back at the beginning of the school year that we had hoped that we were gonna be able to do more than what we, the 1% that we gave. This just shows that this board is committed to continuing in every way that we can take care of our, our staff. So, any, any other questions?
I would just like to say as well that one of the things we are constantly talking about is how proud of our people we are, and how excited we are about each and every one of them, and more and more great people are coming to Montgomery because the great ones that are already here are drawing even more. And so, I'm absolutely for this because I want our people to know how much we appreciate them for everything they do. It's hard work and education, and they are working hard, 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 every single day.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the employee stipends as presented?
I motion we approve the employee stipends as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ivy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mark wanted to get in there. Thank you, Mr. Keelen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Moving to item number 10, informational items. Information item number A, Student Health Advisory Council, the Shack Annual Report.
Dr. Busby, and I'm gonna say, I've not been a superintendent going on seven or eight years, and Mr. Mark Keelen, there's not many board members that can say, one of the very first things I did was give everybody $500. So, kudos to you. Dr. Busby, thank you.
That's a great feather in your hat. Well, thank you for having us here tonight. This time of year, each year we give you an update on our School Health Advisory Council and the activities that they do throughout the year, and I have the pleasure tonight to introduce one of our officers, our Chair of the Shack, Darby Lockridge. She has been on the Shack for seven years, started when her son was in junior high, he has since graduated and moved on, and she is still here as a community member, volunteering her time and being a part of this committee, so I appreciate all of the work that she does. Actually, one of our co-chairs is also in the audience, Ms. Jenny Drew, so appreciate just all of the work that our Shack does. And Darby is gonna give us an update of the activities from our Shack this year.
Yes, it does. I can figure that out. All right, it is my hope that Dr. Busby was able to provide you with our written report that provides a little bit more information about what we do, but this is gonna be a brief overview of what we have done for this past school year. For those that might not be aware, the Student Health Advisory Council is a state-mandated committee at the district level, and the idea is that we are going to be a committee that's mostly made up of non-employee parents. I will say that in our district, it's especially difficult to find non-employee parents because our parents love the district and our teachers love the district so well that they often coincide. But the idea is that we have five or more non-employee parents on the committee in addition to community members, we also have other district staff, and we are a committee that's open to all kinds of folks to come by. folks to come by. One of the things that we are designed to do with the state requirement is that we are supposed to make sure that the values that exist in our community are reflected in the decisions that we make recommendations on as a committee. Additionally, it is kind of an integration point between the general community and health and wellness in lots of different student areas that we review every month or every meeting as a committee. Let's see, oh, and I didn't hit, I thought I hit that one, okay. So, that's the things that I just talked about. Here we go. Alright, so, we do meet per state requirement at least four times a year. Typically, that is two meetings in the first semester, two meetings in the second semester, and any additional meetings as needed. This last year, we just met four times and our dates are listed there. Every time that we meet, we get an opportunity to receive updates from a variety of different health-related district departments. We hear from folks in nursing, counseling, physical education, our nutrition department, especially our curriculum department, and also community resources as often as those departments are available to come and meet with us. One of the main items that the Shack is responsible to kind of do that values check on is on any review of curriculum materials that have anything to do with human reproduction, puberty education, those sorts of things. And so, we do a lot of that curriculum review as it comes up. Those subjects are usually in health, or this last year, we reviewed AP psychology, so a variety of different subjects that we do curriculum review. We also are lucky to be able to provide support for special projects around health and wellness in the district. We will often work on the Health and Wellness Fair that comes around every year, and we're also really excited to be able to provide a little bit of support to the Resource Center whenever it opened up this year, so. And then, as relevant topics come up, our committee members are always willing to bring up information, ideas, and things that we might need to discuss and recommendations that we might feel that we need to make to the board. This year, we did have the opportunity to help with the Health and Wellness Fair. That was in February. We were really excited to welcome over 300 employees. That's an event that we host on a district workday. Employees got to come over, there are lots of vendors, opportunities for our students that are in a health line to career, can provide some wellness checks for folks, and a variety of vendors that are available to just make sure that staff have resources that they need to find wellness in the community. And 17 of our 26 scheduled donors were able to donate blood this year. One of the other big agenda items on the Shack's schedule, every three years actually, we do a triennial assessment of the district's wellness plan, and then we also will review and rewrite that wellness plan as necessary. You may recognize the wellness plan from some of your, from some of the board manual, some of our wellness plan information goes directly to that manual. And this next school year is our year to work on that triennial assessment and wellness plan. One of the things that is a little bit new for our Shack committee, I've, like Dr. Busby said, I've been on the committee for several years, but just about three years ago, the Texas Education Code required that we make some changes to how we operate, including adding some bylaws and some meeting requirements. So, we did actually have an opportunity to, during this year, seat our first co-chair and secretary. I was thrilled with that. As a community member of the Shack Committee, I will eventually hope to pass some of that leadership along. As I mentioned before, we did have an opportunity to review AP Psychology Curriculum, which is offered to junior and senior-level students. We reviewed, we had an opportunity to work really closely with the nursing department to review some of their guidelines and things that they operate under, especially around food allergy management. One of the things that the committee has an opportunity to do also is reach out into the community and offer some resources whenever we're looking for things like how to use an EpiPen, how to get doctor's orders to use an EpiPen, those sorts of things. And we also did review the human sexuality and reproduction sources. The brand is Puberty Talks, which was prevented to students, and we made some recommendations that were ultimately changed through our nursing department for how they make those available to some of our students. Our plans for this next year, like I mentioned, we will be doing the triennial assessment of our wellness plan and a rewrite if necessary. We'll continue to work on the resources that we offer to our students and make sure that that's in line with the values of our community. We will review and recommend some safety suggestions around car rider line safety. We did hear a lot of feedback this year about some concerns in those areas, so that's something that we're gonna plan to talk about this year. And I'm really excited to say that we have, as a, the result of some of our secondary counselors are working hard to make sure that we've got some student representation on the committee this next year. So, we'll also be able to hear from how some of our committee decisions might affect our student population. And as always, while I'm here in this public space, I'll state that we're always looking for new members. Like I mentioned, we like to have at least five non-employee parent members on the, on the committee. I did come and talk to the PTO/PTA meeting with the superintendent and got some really good opportunity to chat with some folks about new members there. But if you have anyone that you know personally or through a school setting that might wanna be a member, we are always looking for new members. I'd be happy to give you my information after the meeting. Any questions that I can answer for y'all?
For the, for next year, for the Health and Safety Fair, is that something we can have at the new CTE building with the facilities there?
Probably. Right now, we use the cafeteria at Montgomery High School and it's spread out a little bit, yeah?
With our program upstairs and everything, it'd be a great place to do it.
Absolutely.
We'll have as much as we can, I think.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So, if we do have somebody that we feels interested, just get him in contact with you.
Me or Dr. Busby? We'll be happy to, I send out usually one or two emails over the summer, just kind of rallying around meeting times and things like that, but.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you for your time.
Darby, thank you so much for serving. We really appreciate it. Ms. Drew, thank you for your service on that committee also.
Item number 10B, Bond Update. Mr. Mansfield.
Hey, Colby, do you have documents that we can sign? You guys?
I'll do it.
You sure? Okay. I know, this guy talks forever. Just kidding, go ahead.
He called you out.
Congratulations, Mr. Keelen, new board members that are elected to new positions. Thank you for your service. So, tonight, we were just back here in May, but we wanted to come back, especially, I mean, in April, with new board members being put on the board or elected on the board, give you a quick update of what's going on in the bond. So, just a quick reminder, this slides up every time, of what we, the community voted for and what we promised in that bond and what we would give them, and we are on track to give them everything in that, give the community and our kids everything in that bond. So, quick reminders of Prop A, B, and C, of what they are. Really, the most specific one and has the one that's the most difficult and restrictive is Prop B with stadium. We'll talk a little bit about that tonight. And then, currently where we are right now in all these, as you can see, there's more green, it keeps creeping up. Renovations for the stadium, or I mean renovations for MHS and for the triplets is a summer project. A majority of the work will be done in the summer. We'll give you a little bit of update of what's going on with that. Fuel center's made a little bit of progress, rain's been hurting that, and CTE is right there, so it's coming along. We were given $326 million roundabout. What we spent at this point in accounting, what money has gone out is right there, and what we have remaining according to the 326 million. Creekside, update on that. This was completed, we opened it in August, and we are in final punch. Security film is, we have a new crew that's come in and closing out the punch, made a lot of progress with security film, HVAC controls, other small items that had just kind of been neglected, they're picking it back up and jumping on it. The big item is the Torazo. Recently had a discussion with POG, got an update this evening on what the status is of that. We've got some decisions to make, and Dr. Ruffin hadn't even, I got that call right before I came in here from POG, and POG is committed to correcting the Torazo, and so we have some options with that that we'll be discussing. But they did come in and core it, and based on those cores, they feel like that they need to remedy it. So, that'll happen. Some of the decisions involve whether it's a one summer or two summer project, and right now, we're gonna hope it gets done in one summer, but these summers are getting shorter. So, we'll be working on that pretty furiously this week. Lake Creek is running along, it's in good shape. Final couple little things going on with HVAC controls there that will get finalized and commissioning and balancing, testing and balancing. CTE AG, so the completion, substantial completion date, and again, substantial completion is when they turn it over to us and say, here you go, and then starts the process of final punch, close out, some items that go through that the architects, contractors, and us work together, but we will be able to allow, allowed to occupy that building if all goes as is planned on 6:15. That means we can move in, furniture will be delivered the next day on that, and that has moved up a little bit from 6:20, I think, earlier this year. So, we're moving along on that. Weather outside of a hurricane or something is not gonna hopefully impact us in that. We're all closed in with that. And then, we've had a pretty significant, when you have a building like CTE, it's, I mean, it's pretty unique, right? It's not like a normal classroom or school where you have, okay, here's what you put in a school desk, you know, cafeteria tables. This has, each room is so unique. So, we have made a lot of progress this week in procuring some of that big, long lead time items, and we don't have any concerns about lead times with a lot of those items. So, I'm about to put in a PO for welding, construction, and fabrication, which have a lot of the lead times on those. So, that's moving along nice. Couple pictures here with the entryway. As I'm talking to people, we're having Cosmo, and the cosmetology lab is, and those of you that have walked in it recently, and I think some of you going on Friday, it's starting, you can kind of see what it's gonna look like in there, and on Friday, actually Thursday, we're gonna get some items delivered, so there's these salon stations and then manicure, pedicure areas, there's facial areas, there's hair washing stations. All these things are gonna be delivered pretty much this week and installed this week. That was one of the first things we wanted to get in there, and those were the longer lead times, and they came in ahead of schedule. The earliest that Stewart allowed us to get them in there because they're still working on it was May 15th, and we have a lot of them, I just got off the phone, we got them scheduled to come in on the 15th and the 16th. One of the exciting things in here is the welding, the self-contained kind of filter welding stations right there, that'll be there in the welding lab. There's the canopy and the bus area has come along. This is, I don't know if I would call this, Brendan, the kind of the hub of the school, but this central area is really cool, it's gonna have some cool graphics. That's where our robotics fields are gonna be, and it's got balconies where kids can look over and see the work, there's engineering surrounding that, all these STEM things all around there, and that floor has come along really nicely, it's a polished and sealed look, almost looks like Torazo, but it's basically just concrete ground down. The green room is the AV lab, so they got the green room installed, that big white thing in there is they had to move event, so that bothers me, but they're gonna be painting it. And then, more exciting is the ambulance, so that's the ambulance, so they put an entire ambulance, and we got the question a couple times, like, how did they get that in there? And I tease and say they dropped it into the roof, but actually, they brought it in piece by piece, kind of like Johnny Cash, you know, one piece at a time. They built it right there in the CT lab, and kids will actually get EMT certification from that with the stretchers up there, the striker stretchers to put them up there, and they, it's gonna be a cool little space for our kids. Torazo, most of the Torazo's covered up in there, but it is installed and down and polished. These steps were one of the things that was exposed because they just glued them down and poured them, and so, we got to see a little look at what the Torazo's gonna look like. Right there on the right-hand side is the CTE lab, and that's, that'll soon be filled with, I mean, I'm sorry, the Cosmo lab, that'll be filled with furniture this week. This is the, on the right-hand side is the den, the cafe at the den, and that's one of the serving tables, and you can kind of see in the back corner right there, a condiment area, they got flooring down, LVT in there, the tiles up, ceiling tile was going in. On the left-hand side, the bottom left, that is the culinary classroom lab, so that equipment is for kids right there in each one of those stations, and you're looking directly at the area that is the teaching area there, so. This is that, this is the den kitchen, right there. So, you can see little serving lines and you can see picture Gordon Ramsay back there yelling at everybody, but that's where our kids will be serving the community one day. And then, there's the entry into the den. And this is the reception area in the front, believe, yes. And then, I wanted to highlight one of my favorite parts, and are these wood ceilings, I love the color of them, they're going up. When you have a building, it's kind of like the cornerstone of the, it's a unique building, it's not like just an elementary school, it's a CT building. Everybody could touch this building in the entire district at some point in time. We did a good job with the finishes there, so that's a pretty sharp look of those wood ceilings going in. This is a mock-up I showed y'all last time, but I did want to point out that Stewart has already started, after some feedback, to move those fans up onto the poles, mount them there so the calves and cows can't bump their heads on them. We're also gonna be installing a switch that you can flip it on and off, but it'll plug into the fan, so you can, if the fan does go out, you just unplug it, plug another one in, do a switch on that. Here's the AG, the arena right there, and they got all the windows in, they're putting in those big fans, those big giant fans in there on the left-hand side, and then they're, the one on the right-hand side is the automotive area, believe, yeah, and that, and, I think the battery's going dead on this. Nope. Okay. And then, this is a look at the, I think many of you are aware, we had a little bit of a problem with the flooring there, and it was a slick finish, so the remedy for that was they're gonna shot blast the entire area right there where the cattle are gonna be, the sheep and the lamb and the pigs, both those areas, and then in the walking areas, they're gonna put what's called an Ardex coating. Did a lot of research on that, provided some information about longevity of that, some places, Huckabee provided me some places it's been installed. It's a pretty good product, it'll have a broom finish on it, so it'll be very similar to what it would look like with concrete. The actual pin areas will remain as a bead blast, rough, but it'll be covered with shavings in there. And then, in the arena, the actual arena area, that'll be sealed with, I think it's called a shark bite or a shark teeth, kind of a little bit of grit in case it is a little bit slick, but it'll have the same finish that's on that, in that area. And then, you can, this one, you won't see it, but some of the fans are going in. We wanna get most of the overhead work done before we do the finishing on the concrete. Next, I believe it is next week, cattle panels are going in in two weeks, and then the dirt the week after that, it goes in, so they'll grate it and add the bank sand right there, and then in the actual arena, they'll add the 70/30 mix in those areas, so all that is going good. They're caulking in the parking lot, they're testing and balancing right down, above ceiling inspections, all kind of the, not as fun stuff, but all means that we're getting close to the end of this project with the CTE building. Parking lot lights are in too, and the turn lane, if you've noticed that, they got that turn lane in that we had to get the county to approve, and they had to do a little bit of asphalt on that, and they should be opening up both of them pretty soon. So, we'll have two ways in and two ways out of that. Montgomery High renovation is gonna start kicking up pretty soon now, so in that specific project, we're gonna have, we're gonna be painting all the teaching walls, so that's where the smart board is gonna go and all those rims. The previous summer, we painted the other parts of the classrooms, but that teaching wall, we knew we were gonna be adding those panels and doing some backing behind there, so we waited to do that this summer. We'll be doing some ninth-grade bathrooms. We'll be doing some ninth grade bathrooms that didn't get done last summer, some kitchen equipment will be installed, also some emergency lights, upgrade PA system, graphics on the PLAM. Most of the graphics package was done last summer, but there's a little bit of the PLAM graphics that weren't ready last summer, total of about 23 bathrooms. And we're doing this with a coordination, and I wanted to real quick, thank David, who's in the room, his, his help and support with this, and also Amanda as well, and then I guess Brendan as well. He does a little bit on the job, so we appreciate him. But all the work that goes in behind the scenes, but David worked really hard with our coaches and athletics to get access to the gyms and spaces, and it was a challenge, right? Because we're renovating this building, so we've got to be careful. We don't want kids wandering through the building, but we, they were allowed access to gyms, weight rooms, dance rooms, portions of band halls, an area where they can continue summer work safe, safely, and they can still continue with the renovation. So he worked really hard on getting that scheduled, so that's going to be nice to have that ability to do that. Transportation Fuel Center, weather has killed us on this job, and now, knock on wood, we've had a good little run here. So coming up this Thursday, we are going to pour concrete in the fuel center area. So that area right there that you can see formed, that is where the fuel tanks are going to go, and the canopy over those fuel tanks is going to go right there. We, we cannot install those fuel tanks, they're ready to be installed now, we can't install them until that concrete gets poured because they don't want to splash it up onto those fuel tanks. Once we get that concrete poured, which knock on wood Thursday will happen, then we, we can get those, the next week, Monday, we can set those fuel tanks in, and that's huge to get that done in the canopy. They've already started with the dirt removal. If you see that big giant dirt hill right there, about 30% of that has been removed, they'll continue to get that out of there. As they move that out, they're going to start clearing out Phase 2, which is the part that's closest, where our bus is parked right now. Once they get all that cleared out, then they'll pour concrete there, and that's kind of the bulk of that project. Then starts the challenge of removing the old fuel tanks, making sure there's no issues down there, getting them drained, get the other ones activated online, so our bus drivers will have bus fuel ready when they come back. I wanted to point out the, the weather there with the rain, some of the, the conduit trenches that have been full, and they pump them, they fill right back up. Here's another picture of the, the area that's going to get poured on Thursday, and the detention pond is finally done. I, I, I feel like, that, that's a relief for me, personally, because I mean, that's, it's been a pain to get that done, and the weather hasn't been cooperating, and that being done, weather's not as big a barrier when it comes to that, so. And then here's a couple of top views again of the, the concrete that's already been poured. We had a plan in place to let the bus drivers kind of shift the buses to this area, and then so they could start moving Phase 2. Well, next week, school's out, so it's going to be a very short period of time where we're probably going to have to shift those buses, and they'll have to walk a little bit longer, trek that last week, because if they park the buses here, there's a safe path we created was, that'll get them into the transportation center. It'll only be about a week of that, once that happens, and then the summer, summer school will run down from the bottom part, that area down there, the eight or nine buses we can keep down there, so they won't even have to mess with it. So they can, they, buses will not be a factor anymore. They, they typically would have to slow down work or stop work during bus pickup and drop off, you know, in the morning and then the afternoon, because buses were rolling in and out of that place. Renovations to the triplets is moving along pretty good now. Just to give you an idea of what's going to be going on, the most astonishing number to me is 112 bathrooms that are going to be renovated in this, in this project this summer. And I know it's over three campuses, but that's a lot of bathrooms, and that's a lot of things that could go wrong in those bathrooms as far as what's behind them, and they've already, we allowed them access to get in and look behind some of those walls, and so far, knock on wood, the news is good, they're able to get things like carriage bolts and some of the studs that are back there, they typically rust, they found a few of those. If that continues, we'll roll through in good shape in that one. Substantial completion on that is set for 7:30. All the renovation projects we set for about 7:30, some of them will be done a little bit earlier hopefully, but 7:30 is the time when teachers start coming back. Here's some of the pictures of the work they've been doing after hours right here, they've been taking some of the toilets out, checking the carriage bolts, removing some of the sheet rock and getting ready for new sheet rock and tile in those bathrooms. We're going to be putting down epoxy floor. One of the things that I thought the D1 did really well here is they, these are the gang bathrooms or the group bathrooms in the hallway. We wanted them to be able to get into a few of those, and we told the campus, work with them, so kids know to go to different areas. They really sealed it off really well, and so any paint that happened the night before, any work done the night before, you couldn't even tell, there was no impact on the rest of the school. So they did some good work, and you can kind of see the inside of it, right there, what it looks like with the two-by-fours and the thick plastic. Athletic complex is moving along, and that is going to be a substantial completion of 8:15. That is a tight, tight timeline, and I'll get to where that's why we, what we're worried about. It has nothing to do with the fieldhouse, anything related to that. Turf is on track, it's doing good, fieldhouse is looking good. It has to do with the bleachers and the steel. So those, that's going to be showing up in July. We feel like it, it's going to be done on time, but it's going to be tight. So we're going to stay on top of that one. David's going to spend a lot of time out there with me this summer, making sure that we're on top of that. We've, what we've done so far, and this is just a quick overview of that. The good news on some things is the asphalt is down in that back parking lot, and so we got to wait, I think, what is it, 24 days or 25 days until we could stripe it, because it has to cure. The islands are in, and here's the piers for the, it's ready to receive steel pretty quickly, once we pour that foundation underneath there in that concrete, and then the, the concession foundation has been poured. We're going to actually erect the elevator shaft and the press box steel first, and then the kind of the bleachers will come along behind it, and they'll get rolling pretty quick on that once it shows up. Here, you can see some roof trusses on the new fieldhouse showing up, and then they put some of the, they're preparing for some brick on the CMU walls. Wanted to go over real quick, we got together with some principals and fine arts people and staff, and we talked about, here's the new home side, right? The new home side has, the old home side has the section of reserve right in the middle, right, right down the middle. So we don't have reserved on the current visitor side, which is going to be the new home side, on the bottom part. It's going to be added to the top. Well, we ran into a challenge of leaving that bottom part down there, that when they designed that and put that in, those seats of your sitting, and y'all, I'm sure you've sat on that visitor side before, the seats are closer together, the benches, so it's about five inches closer. You can't put a seat back on each one of those in that lower section because there wouldn't be enough room. You'd have to sit like sideways, and then still, it, it just, it couldn't be done. So we talked about a couple of solutions, and one of them being adding to the wings. If you look at the, the 572, 572, and then 550 in the middle, we're definitely putting seat backs here. And here, and here was talked about, adding them there. The problem is, is that fine arts oftentimes may use these sections, and will we be restricting, if we had all those reserved sections? That was the discussion that was about that, like, are we restricting to just people who can't or don't want to pay for a reserved seat? Would we be taking away the unreserved seats, and it would kind of limit some of our sections for our extracurriculars to go in? The idea that we kind of landed on is, in this bottom section right here, in this 450 right there, it's an, end up going to be about 200 reserved, we're going to go every other row. So if you, it actually could be, it turned out to be a pretty good seat. If you're sitting in a seat and you have a seat back, the seat in front of you will just be a bench. The next seat down will be a seat back. That'll match about the same number of reserved seats that we have on the other side. That's the way we got it, we got away with having them in the same section as the other ones right down the middle. The other challenge is our disabled handicap elderly patrons have liked to sit in that bottom half side. If you know, if you remember on the current home side we have right now at, at the stadium, there's a little section down there. It's like their own little platform for both wheelchair, disabled, elderly. We don't have that on this side, so we wanted to make sure we kind of protected a section for reserved, not that they need to be protected from the students, but students are allowed, and it was kind of going to be their section right there. We're going to leave that first row as well. There's, there's bench seating in there, but also that first row reserved for, for some of our elderly and disabled patrons. So that's what we landed on right now. We did come across, I found out today, that sturdy steel was concerned about ADA with the, the plan we have here. The architect, PBK, was looking at some options of, but just because that bench seat is in the way, or the, the bench is in the way, will that give you enough space in between the bench and the seat for ADA egress? PBK's looking into that, and he's going to get back with me to say, see, he's going to check with the city, make sure we're okay, because we are in city limits, and they're going to want to look at that. So that may put a hindrance on this, and we would go back to the drawing board about what we would need to do on this. Seat backs can be added at any time, though. It's, it's not a, it's something that is dependent on, like, if we do something with construction right now, you can go and screw in seat backs later on if we needed to do something else. But that's the plan as of right now. And then the turf started today, and they will, that's on time, to be finished on time. Couple other summer projects that are going on, within the scope of work and contingency with MHS, we, we had a, a promise to give Oak Hills and Kenan teaching walls with the, the new Samsung smart boards. We're going to be doing that this summer, and those two projects there. Lincoln, we have some contingency money that, I don't know if you've ever driven in that driveway, I mean, it's, it's kind of a mess right there at the entrance, I want them to finish that off, connect it to the road, where we have that little gap, and then there's some grading work and some drainage we need to finish there. Then we'll be done pretty much with Package C on that, that's the last bit of that. One of the requests we've had in the past from the, if you know, MHS has tennis shade there, that, that has been there for a while, Lake Creek does not, they're kind of open. We've been approached by the campus about adding some shade there. They do have a budget, and the bond budget for some renovations at Lake Creek. I mean, it's a newer campus, but there's still some, some room in there, that some renovations that need to be done. It was budgeted in this bond. Some of that was spent on that outdoor reading area that you see at Lake Creek, others was done with some other work throughout, but this would be something, we would use that budget if we ended up doing that, we have some quotes on that, but to provide them with some shade over the spectator areas. And then Oak Hills has the same situation, they have a very small budget out of this bond for some renovations. They have requested for an outdoor learning spaces. Oak Hills grows, right? And we add portables, what we don't add is space to eat, and so this would allow them about 70 more seats outside. It would be covered and fenced in, follow all the safety procedures, and would also serve an outdoor learning space when you want to spill out there into that area. So it'll be fenced off, it's right off the, kind of the bus lanes, that little area right there. So those are some of the summer projects that are going to be going on there. Any questions?
Are we still under budget? Are we right at it on all the projects right now?
It depends on the project. I mean, we're, we're under budget. Creekside and Lake Creek are coming in under budget, and we have contingency left there. CTE is, is under budget, and CTE's a little bit tighter because we moved, again, it was just moving the pot of money F, F, and E from one to the other. We have healthy contingencies at MHS, and we'll see about, it just all depends with the triplets, what they find behind the walls, but we have a healthy contingency there as well. And we're putting some front canopies on there that was included in there, but it's looking, it's looking really healthy right now.
Okay. Brad, the steel for the stadium, you said it's not going to get here till July?
July.
Okay, so if it's July, do we have a beginning July, middle July?
It's the middle of July, I can't remember the exact date.
You'll call it 30 days?
Yeah, they're going to have to rock and roll and get it done quick.
All right.
We have a plan, and like, I think the only thing scheduled was a scrimmage during that time, and then some pictures, and they historically have taken, they can still take a picture on the old home side if they wanted to take it there. And then the scrimmage, if need be, if we didn't want to do it a little bare, we could just have everybody sit on one side, was an idea that was thrown out, you know? So instead of using that side, let them continue to do that, and then we can just have the Any other questions?
The road going out to the loop, is that, I haven't been out there in a while, is that poured or not?
No, they're going to be removing that crush stone pretty soon. In fact, I think that was supposed to be done last week, and it got rained out, it's to be pushed this week, then they will pave that. We actually did, I asked, in talking with chief, one of the things we talked about in traffic when we were discussing with athletics directing traffic, we requested to have another light put in, one a little further down, to give a little bit more lighting closer to Lone Star for our police officers. That is in, being, it's in the middle phase right now and waiting to get priced.
On the CTE center, are we, do we have a soft grand opening date?
So we have, so I mean, we have July 29th as a kind of a invitation-only walk, and then July 30th is our ribbon cutting, correct? Is that right? And that's the open house of the community. So, but we, we want to move in. The 15th, I'm, I'm putting a table over there and we're receiving, because we got a lot of stuff coming.